Please rise and pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business tonight before we go into the approval of our prior minutes is a public hearing regarding the residence at 315 South River Road Street. Most of you know this is a building that has been vacant basically since the tornado a couple of years ago. And we are moving forward with steps to remedy that. So Andy, if you'd like to step on that tonight as building commissioner.
On May 12th, I sent out certified mail. This return receipt requested to Nick Bloodsoe. And we received nothing back. I haven't even got the receipt back, so it hasn't been picked up. And I haven't been able to make any kind of contact with him. But in that letter, which I gave you copies of, he's got 30 days to remedy the issues that are listed under our various codes, which would be June 11th. And after that time, per our ordinance, we can take action to remediate the issue. So we're just waiting until the 11th of June, since he's not here.
Aaron, do you have anything to add to that? And I mean, once that 11th date comes and goes, obviously, is there any other legal steps we need to take?
The next step will be to put out for bid, which we've got to do with the other property anyway, so we can bid them both at the same time. You know, this is something where we don't expect to hear back from because of the status of this house. And it's been made pretty clear from Andy's report that it's an unsafe structure. And nothing's being done by him or anyone to maintain it. And since he hasn't appeared tonight to say anything, then it would be up to the board to decide whether to affirm Andy's decision to declare it unsafe and tear it down, or to vote against that.
Does that vote need to take place tonight? Or do we wait till after the deadline?
I would wait till after the deadline. Because technically, he's got that 30 days. And on that date, we can not only make the finding that Andy's told them, but then we can show that he hasn't done anything. So we just need to let the 30 days tick.
On the 14th. So the time will be a few days before the vote.
So we can, at the June 14 council meeting, we will take action on the findings. Are there any comments in regards to this this evening? Do I hear a motion now that we close?
Shall we close the public hearing?
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to the approval of our prior minutes. We have three here. The first was May the 10th, a regular meeting. I want to make a motion to approve.
I make the motion to approve the minutes.
Your second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The second one is a festival meeting held on the same day. May 10th.
I make the motion to approve the festival meeting?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And the third one was held on May 15th.
A motion to approve the emergency public meeting?
Second, that one.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, we'll move on to our report.
All right, underwater, the Flint Street at 585,000. 50 gallons of water since May 10th. Our average daily usage is 41,789. Builder for backwash today. The May water report's complete. It's been submitted by him. Water meters have been read for the month of May. And then we only have two hose bid meters left. I'd like to order them as needed in the future, unless you guys feel otherwise. You know, we bought 10, it's taken us this long to get rid of. And then, you know, we sold a thousand bucks in that. And I'm just, you tell people they're going to have to wait, you know, a week or whatever, like, no order from utilities. It takes a few days. To the inner wastewater, bid forming daily checks at the lift station, the ponds, and the SSO during rain events. Our sewer plant's closed, and we're not discharging. The weekly samples are complete. And we had to clean the sewer main behind the town garage. And then after cleaning it, we televised it. And discovered a high spot in that. And we're going to have to dig about 30 feet of that up. Either try to crack the grade or replace that section to restore maximum flow. I mean, it's flowing, but it's, there's a little hill in it there. So it's keeping some water back behind it. Under the streets, I met with Endeavor again today. And we're going down the walk through again with CSU. They were giving a deadline by Endeavor. June 1st is it. And discussion out is Endeavor may bring a new contractor in after January 1st to finish these little repair issues and these cleanup issues. So box taken away on that. And then Stu's getting ready to talk about, we've got an opportunity to get matching grants from Endot for paving. And during our last store, we received hail damage to almost all the town's buildings from the round coming back today. And the damage ranged from mild to severe. The worst ones, they were not being, the new building, sewer plant, air was destroyed. It's the absolute worst one. The gutters are all dented up. The downspouts are all dented up.
Can't get away from that project.
So it got worse than, it got worse than even here in town. But with your approval, I'd like to have our insurance company come out and go around all these, this, this building pretty bad. Yeah, and so is the shelter house. The water plant, there really wasn't anything. It's kind of weird. But there's, there's issues with everything.
Shelter house is pretty old. Is that pretty old?
12 years.
Would you like to make a motion to?
I'll make a motion.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
You're going to do that?
All right. And under building, the two building inspections, one electrical and the two final inspections. Had one permit application, and one building permit was issued on previous application. And then, of course, you guys got it from the letter. Sent out on 315 South River Road. That's all I have, unless you have any questions.
This, this Endot paving thing, Stu's getting ready to talk about it.
Oh, okay. You need to get up? You're on deck.
Okay. Well, short and simple here. And this is kind of fast and furious, as you know. A law that's just passed and placed. It's allowing folks also to receive some monies and just recently, stuff that was already yours to begin with in the first place.
Such as everybody else.
You're right. But Endot has taken a call, what they call a call for projects. And that's going to run from May 31st to, I believe, it's July 3rd. Okay, to get applications. And that's in order to receive 50/50 funding. It's a 50/50 match program. And that's, it, it, it could be tough for smaller communities, depending on what you have. But also, it's something I think, in the long run, you guys should do as a plan. Maybe you don't do this right away. You don't go for a 50/50 project. Maybe it's later on down the line, you save up some money and you build that up. But this way, you get this pavement, the asset management plan in place, and that has to be done first. Well, actually, first what needs to be done is you have to have what is called an ERC. And that is an employee responsible charge. Okay, it's basically just a contact person that's going to be, that has to get certified through the state. It's about a one-day course. It's about a three-hour, three- or four-hour day course. And you get certified, and that way you have it out there. That's Department of Transportation's requirements. So we still have one day coming up that you guys can do that if you wish to go through this plan, get the ERC certified. And that's June 16th.
June 6th.
And that's downtown Indianapolis. Get that done, and then we can go forward. If you want to do a pavement asset management plan. And that entails every single mile of your whole town. Not just set area, project area. It's just, it takes everything into effect. It takes your mileage, it takes the conditions, how you're supposed to treat it, et cetera. So I have it here. We're providing the service for our clients. Unless you guys don't want to take the time and do it yourself, there is some, there are some things here from a, from a transportation engineer standpoint. There's a few items on here that are a little bit tricky. You guys can read off of there. But I think basically what we're calling for for this, and it shouldn't take us too long to do. We can wrap this up very quickly, get this in in order for you guys to apply. If you wish, brands down the road. But I think we were calling for, with your mileage, I think you guys are at 702s, am I correct? Something of that nature. So we're, a lot of times, there's, there's factors that you can times and multiply this by, and then basically double that. So, but we felt that you've been a good client for us. We understand and appreciate your business. And so we're, I think we're charging only $3,100.
$3,100.
Just to get you through this. Get you down the road. This is going to happen very quick. As we said, May 31st to July 3rd, the call for projects. So you have to have this part portion done. You've got to hear what this looks like.
This work, does it have to be completed this year? Or is this something that?
This, this plan that I have in front of you, what I'm giving you the contract for is, has to be done this year.
But not the paving?
Right.
Is that what you meant?
Well, yeah, I meant the actual work, not.
Not the study.
Not the study.
Yeah, it'll, this funding will come. It's going to be a while. How Endot knows it takes a long time. You could be a year, two, three years down the road.
I guess what I'm thinking, as it being a 50/50 match, I mean, if we acquire more funds between now and, you know, then, obviously, our grant will be larger.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, and it's up to a million dollars is what you can apply it for. But again, 50/50 match. So, yeah.
How long are they going to be off from this?
I think that they're, normally, they do this every year, basically.
It's going to be in every year?
I, that's what I'm hearing. It changes. They have different type of programs that involve a 50/50 match. You have a community crossings grant. They have bridges, say, process schools. So.
So once this is done, we can, let's say we don't get the grant, modify again, and still use the same?
That's, I'm under the assumption. And I don't, I don't know exactly, because this just came out. I mean, this just, just came about here in the last week. It was all. But, but the first step is in order to get any kind of funding and to be considered, that you want to get any kind of, you've got to do this first. But the plan basically is here. It'll be followed.
What kind of money is it? Can you take out local roads and streets? Or what would you like to? What line are you? That one's not.
I kind of like to take it out of local roads and streets. I don't know, I kind of like to. I kind of like to use local roads and streets and suggest more local roads and streets. I mean, we could probably take it out of that or split it between that and MVH and the general fund. We may just have, maybe just the general fund. Maybe just transfer, do a line transfer.
But you can take it from any source.
So when you, when you actually send in the application, this is done, and they'll want to know how much you're going to, you know, how much you need. So that's not locked in? I mean.
No. We say 50,000. You can back out at any time. I mean, if you find that, yeah, you can increase. Or you can just say, well, we don't have necessary funding. All of what we need to do, what we could like to do.
So they're doing the road paving this year. Endot's doing that. But like you were saying, they, they may change the project next year, might be.
It may be, yeah.
Sidestreet sidewalks or.
Yeah, because they've got so many different programs right now going all at once. And you have to be quick with it. It's, it's just weird, I know. But that's just how they, this DOT works.
So be the safe that we can get paving money.
It's not going to come this year, I don't think. It's, when the funding comes, yeah, it's down the line. It'll, it could be next year.
But we'd have to pretty much come up with a projected amount that we're going to ask for, so that we could get that 50/50 match. So we'd have to tell them what size of project.
Probably know where, yeah, where it's coming from.
And what size of project we're going to have. But we need to.
We could come up with a real close guess.
We'd need to put all the money together and see how much we can come up with and try to get the max that we have for 50/50.
Did, did Karenie give us extra money for highways? The co, the, wasn't that a?
Yeah, that's what we're talking about. Kind of what we're talking about. What kind of snowball did this whole thing, isn't it? Yeah, we got that, and we got 58,000. And it's just in local roads and streets. You can use 25% of it for other things, but we really need it. We need all of the streets.
Yeah, 58,000 dollar project on road farmland paving.
Yeah, but if we could double it.
Yeah, we'd do a 116. It'd be nice if we could do a leased.
Plus, we could add what we have in the roads and streets now. And if it's not till next year, we could guess.
Is there any way you could find out?
There's classes. Yeah, there's classes coming up here through Endot, here all the way through till July 16th. There's some that are right now, this week and next week, some training sessions. And then they're going to tell, you know, basically spell everything out. And of course, the website has everything too. So they're just going to, they're just going to keep banning this, do these emails and this, this stuff out. I think they need to get more, and understand themselves as well as, as we do.
But there's only one more chance for people to certify?
Yes.
That can down.
And if you don't have that, then it's, this is a moot point.
Now, where, where do you find that information? That certification? I was told that was not, I heard that that originally was needed, and then I heard that it was not. I'm kind of curious.
No, that is, it's, for any, any type of LPA, any type of projects, and that's local projects, you need, you have to have an ERC. That is, and I found that out too, to be the case. I mean, this, I found this out last year. You know, we just started getting back into transportation ourselves. We used to do it a long time ago. And we hired on two engineers here in the last three years, so.
Now, would that be in Endot's website information somewhere?
It's on the LPA, it'll be local.
Okay.
So you go find that, and they'll tell you. They'll tell you that, yeah, it's called ERC. I've got some note here somewhere. We like to, yeah. Employee responsible charge. To be experienced, fully certified ERC, understated consultant contracts, how to negotiate, invoicing, quarterly reporting, all that, you know, gobbledygook. You know, they need one person from each community to do that. It could be anybody. Yeah, this is a, this is just a recertification course. I mean, you can certify. And that was from last year, but I can, I'll get you that.
Okay, I'll just go on their website, and I'll pull that up and get the current one. I want a copy of that. Was this something you want? Move on this evening? Someone like that. Make a motion. Make a motion, we go ahead and hire try. I had to do this, study for this pavement. Asset management plan. Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
There's three copies. I'll take one, and I'll, I'll take two. This one is covered. Sorry. I've got copies. I just took the. Copy of what the plan's going to entail. Here's this. Another year copy.
You want to look at that, Robin? Sure.
Yeah, she's, she's going to send us.
Need a break?
You keep one, I've got to take two. Provide one to Endot, one for ourselves, and then you keep one. Sorry, folks.
I think it's Amy.
Take a baby's piss pile away. You should take it on her.
That's all I need. We'll be in touch, and we'll get going on this. Assuming, I don't know who wants to be in charge, be the ERC, and it's going to be. It's Heatmore on the zip.
Yeah, we'll give him one more thing today. Like he doesn't have enough.
That's right. Okay, thank you, folks, very much.
I want to get a copy of that, because I may not be the one wanting to do this for our key.
Okay.
I knew that's why you were asking.
Exactly.
Oh, we do? We just have one on that. This is on the water project. Okay.
It's old news, old business.
Glad you were next. Anyway, thank you for being patient. I'm fine.
All right. Next, we're old business now.
All right. Well, this is a public hearing this evening. Personal of your application for your water project to the Indiana Office of Community and Rural Affairs. It's a requirement of the program to have these hearings. You guys know the drill. Same program we did with the wastewater. We are asking for 700,000. And your match is 685,290 dollars for a total project of 1,395,200 dollars. The application will be submitted on June 10th. And we'll find out if we're successful on July 21st. And the project is really to just do your water mains, some valves, hydrants in town. Take care of looping, some dead ends. Nothing with your plant or your tower. Those were done not too long ago. Those are in pretty good shape. So I think this is just the last component to your water system. Get it in good shape. So it's just a requirement of the program to have this and to solicit questions or comments.
Any questions from the floor tonight?
I would like to add, it is a very, very competitive program. I'm not sure how many applications went in this round. But I know it's, it's a competitive program. And in order for us to score higher, we need to get letters of support. I know, I think, Robin and I talked today. We're going to translate this on Facebook, asking people to get some letters. I put it on there today, but I, okay. I, I told them by Friday. That's great. The sooner the better. They have a new format. It's going to take a little longer than it seems to go. They might all want to jump dry, so we've got to scan.
Is there anything specific, Amy, that they like to, they like to hear in those letters? I mean, obviously.
I always tell people to cry on. If you have low pressure, if you have bad drinking water, if you, I know Andy, a few years ago, had the water being brave on Christmas Eve. And the town was out, you know, for hours. People complaining of that. Any of those kind of situations are very helpful. High water bills. High water bills, yes. I'll change stuff, so, but now is your chance to complain. Your one and only time to complain. We'll accept complaints. Only about the water. Nothing else.
You guys are making a good investment, though, when you raise your rates where they're at. And that's important, et cetera. That should go well in the application, though. That's going to look, that's going to go far.
I think you're going to score high, because you do have, the lines are old, quality's bad. And your rates are so high. You're, financial impact and the need.
I always put a parentheses or quotes, Flint, Michigan. Remember Flint, Michigan?
Don't make any fun.
We don't have any. No, but yeah. Oprah doesn't know that, though.
Well, that's it for me. But I do have a bunch of places that you need to sign. Do you want to go distant round after meeting? Or do you want to send someone else?
Yeah, if you don't mind.
That's fine.
And we'll just carry on.
Stu.
That's fine.
I'll get the signature. All right, another order of old business is the NPRS resolution.
The FERC. The FERC to add.
I know we tabled this last couple meetings. And we need to make a decision tonight. If you can just kind of refresh us on that again, Robin. So.
It goes into effect July 1st. And that's when you'll start, we'll start withholding from him his, his share too. You have the option to buy out the last six months. And, you know, I don't have it in front of me. But it's not the 11 point. It's not the percentage that we normally pay. It's above that. So it was like 35, 3500, 3800. It was over 3500. So, I mean, I'm, I'm, it's your decision. But I'm, I'm just recommending, don't buy it out. Just start it in July.
We start in July, we just start paying the same percentage rate as everyone else. And taking away his, what, 3% out? Hold, this is 3.
I say we start in July.
Any motion?
I motion we start in July.
Your second?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, this just needs parentheses, but you're right here. I didn't make copies of it, because it's there. They created it, a FERC this resolution. But if you want copies, I'll make you a copy. It's just long and wordy. I'm sorry, can I?
Aye, do.
Pam.
Okay, any other old business tonight? Okay, we'll move on to new business. We've already, Stu's already spoke. So let's look at adjusts. Utility adjustments, looks like we have one here this evening.
It's two, it was actually two, but some of them.
Been repaired.
I think committee two to go ahead and do the adjustment.
Your second? No, second. All in favor?
Aye.
I was going to ask you. Is that situation that serious?
It's serious. I'm getting a person resource. Yeah, yeah, that's like a signature resource. She was supposed to call me, and she called me back. I don't touch base with her.
Any other new business tonight? Got Matt Stevens on there. Pardon me, Matt Stevens on there.
Your news?
Yeah, I'm gonna, okay, I'm saving for my house.
Oh, okay.
I did that on purpose.
No, all right.
That's all right. Any other new business tonight? All right, Matt, we have Matt Stevens here this evening. Papa John's and Matt wants to come and talk to us tonight. Also, he's going to feed us after the meeting, so.
Appreciate you giving me the time to appear.
Sure.
Speak to y'all, just kind of an example flyer. What we have is a Papa John's mobile trailer, we can use it for fundraising, different towns. It's a seven by fourteen, it's not really a big trailer, big enough to put in a parking spot. We just go town to town early and find people and places that will let us set up our trailer and sell pizzas, breadsticks, cookies, brownies, dollar twenty on strings. And then we donate twenty percent back to whoever allows us to do it. So we would love to get involved with your community and see if you all be interested in working with us. We do a lot of different other towns, we've Frankton, I'm seeing the Sharpsville, Tanner, Hagerstown, we do Sheridan, Kirkland. There's a lot of different towns that we do this in. It works really well for us and for whoever does it, because, you know, we go to outside towns, they don't have a Papa John's or a National Chain. We just partner up and hours, kind of sell decent amount of pizzas and we also have a pre-order sheet, if people wanna pre-order, if they want specialty pizzas or wings or anything like that. So if you want to pre-order, we have that option as well.
How often would you be coming to set up?
Some places we do once a month, some places we do every two weeks, it really depends on the community and how well it goes over. But for the most part, it's usually a once a month, usually set, you know, a couple hours. When they maybe hits a spot and we give, we give you the flyers handout and you just help advertise through social media and it's a pretty easy program.
Require electric bill or water or anything like that?
Don't need any, we have sterile waters, so we keep it, it's hot to put that, we have in Washington station, we're really not touching the pizzas, so. It sells, 'cause it's already in the box, already cooked, they're helping make pretty much cover that aspect of it. We really just set up shop in a spot that should allow us to set up in and just advertise it and we just sell pizza, breadsticks, cookies and drinks, we give you all twenty percent.
Now, do you have a menu?
Do you pre-make the pizzas?
Yes, the pizzas are good. We serve Sally Elliott's store, we have that old Papa John's, about nineteen minutes from here.
Yeah, okay.
Do you have a health department certificate?
Sure do. And we'd also, I mean, some counties are different, you know, some will offer just a regular, sometimes we have to give a seated permit, so we obviously find out what we need, so we will do it. We have in Washington stations, as far as for health, we get all that covered.
Good idea to me.
Yeah.
Make a motion, we go ahead and allow them to set up here and down as often as they like.
Once a week?
Objections to that, we don't have, we don't have any place to get pizzas.
Are you guys the ones that has the cheese and crust on it or are they advertised on TV?
Uh, we don't have like a, like a cheese crust, but we do have cheese dip. I can create something.
Now, do you have, how, do you have a menu or whatever that you can get, like with your specialty pizzas and your wings and that type of thing?
Yeah, we have a sheet, so if somebody wants to, you know, if they wanna customize as much as they like, we can accommodate that. As long as I know ahead of times, all really you have to do is just shoot me an email the day before the event, or the day of the event, actually. Maybe five hours before the event, let me know that, hey, Jones, we have works, buffalo chicken, tours, wings. And I would just be here at whatever time they want me to be. If we're here from five to seven, if they say they're gonna be there six o'clock, we could have their order here with the name on it, and just come up to the trailer and say, I'm here to take the orders for Jones.
Is there a website that they can order this, that, that, that people in town can order, pre-order from, or how do they?
Basically, I have a pre-order sheet, so I need somebody who would get in charge of that. Or I guess, I have a Gmail address, or even I would take phone calls, so I don't have an issue with that as well.
No, I'm just trying to, I'm just trying to think, if it gets going and people in town wanna pre-order, what's the easiest way for them, do they have to, you know, how many steps do they have to go through to get it to you?
The easiest way.
Call Elwood.
Call Elwood, okay.
You can do that as well, yeah, just talk to the manager in charge, or you can call me or email me.
Okay.
Call me would probably be better, 'cause you may go through my junk, 'cause I don't always go through that, but. You know, I may have a lot of places, just call me up and just say, hey, you know, I'm gonna be there at six o'clock, can you bring me a couple of work pizzas and a cheese dip? Say no problem, I do have a, I didn't bring that with me, I apologize, but I do, I can email somebody with the pre-order sheet, we have, pretty much anything that we have in our menu, we have an option to get. The prices will be a little bit different than these.
Sure.
Just because we have to charge a little bit more for specialty products.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
Can you say anything about what the capacity normally is when you've done this before? How many pizzas you would move in two hours?
Well, the record's two hundred, so.
And what would, what would an average be?
Average, eighty to a hundred, most places. First times usually the, I get smashed, so normally my, I normally start out if I need, I start a place, I mean, it really depends on the size of the town or whatever, but. We have a capability of holding eighty-four pizzas to start out with.
How many?
Eighty-four.
In the, in the trailer?
In our trailer alone.
Okay.
And then I have, obviously, you know, my cars will hop bags or vans, I could, you know, if I needed to.
Call and resupply.
We always have stuff ready, 'cause I need, you know, I start running low, I call the stores, hey, throw me another, bring me another twenty pepperoni or whatever it may be. Sometimes it do run out, but, you know, sometimes it is unpredictable, you don't know, sometimes I don't sell very much at all if it rains or, you know.
Have you ever done anything at lunchtime instead of dinnertime?
Um, I'm gonna be testing that, no, at a library, so I haven't done a lunchtime yet, but I'm going to be doing that, I think in Porkville. So I'm gonna be doing one of the libraries there. I'm not opposed to it, I'll try anything, we just wanna get involved and.
So you're kinda flexible with your schedule when you could or would come and set up, like if there's a special event or something going on, we could call you up and say, hey, we got this going on and then be a, you know?
We have two trailers, we also have a ten, like a ten by ten, ten, some places won't allow us to have a trailer.
You wanna settle lunch Friday before our festival? When all vendors are here.
Yeah, well, soon our festival's here.
Where would we put him? Because we would have to, we couldn't bring a vendor spot, but you wouldn't, yeah, 'cause everybody's hungry and there's no.
We may place one somewhere.
Yeah, yeah, we should.
Festival's actually.
Especially since it doesn't need electricity, we could.
Yeah.
Put it behind town.
Pointing show that law.
Also, prices, you could also, if you wanted, if you think I'm charging too much, too less, I mean, we could always be flexible with that as well. You know, if you think we, you know, we can get ten dollars or eleven dollars, whatever, you know, the more, then the more I could donate to you all.
Negotiable pizza. Yeah.
And good.
We could use slices too, sir.
Okay.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Matt, thank you. We don't have any, do we have any permits that were required for this type of thing?
Ten bucks.
Yeah, we have like a ten dollar peddler's permit, that's good for.
A year?
Because of the.
A year. Being a third partner with us, could we waive that fee?
You can do anything you wanna, Mr. Piper, you're.
I'll make a motion, we waive the fee since it's partners with us.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Can I, can I ask another question?
You sure can.
So, just in terms of the ten, I don't wanna get in any trouble, so if I would contract with them to do something for me, does that twenty percent have to come back to you, or? You know, if I do something down here on Saturday lunch?
I think it should depend on him.
Okay, honestly, what I do is, I mean, have this happen a lot, whoever I work with first, whoever tells me yes first, they have, they give, they have the rights to whatever I do. So they have to give me permission to work with you. So if they say, hey, it's okay for me to come set up on a lunch, then I have to get the okay through you all, since you're allowing me to do it. I do that if I, the library, you know, I, I usually get come first, come first, or sometimes I work with fire department, sometimes it's police department, sometimes it's library, schools. Whoever comes to me first is usually, I, I give first.
Well, we give you the okay, that's most definitely.
Okay, that's usually just how I work, as long as I get the okay from you all that it's okay for me to.
I make a motion that okay for him to.
I would think that, you know, something like that where a business wanted to, basically, I mean, that would be almost like a, you know, private type transaction deal there. It's not like he's setting up out on our street and he's not catering to the public there, he's actually doing it for an event that a business owner's gonna have, so I wouldn't have a problem with that, not, town not being involved in something like that. If a business owner or somebody private had a birthday party or something, when you set up near the yard or, you know, I wouldn't really, it really wouldn't be like what we're talking about. You know, we're talking about setting up out, you know, on the public street or whatever and selling to the general public and what he's offering us to be part of, but. I would say, my opinion is, is if someone personally or a business is wanting to hire him for an event, that wouldn't, you know, involve us.
I agree.
Well, I, I ask because, I mean, in the location we're in Carmel, I've had food trucks come on a Saturday and basically park in front of the building. You know, I had the barbecue guy from Fisher's, I've had several different food trucks, you know, just, I don't charge them anything, I don't do any kind of revenue share with them. But it creates an opportunity for their business and given the traffic like we talked about this week, we generate, you know, there's a lot of people that eat at the food truck, you know? And, you know, as I mentioned the other day, and I'm very concerned about with the number of people that come to see us, they have someplace to eat, you know, until we can figure out all this real estate down here and do make something happen.
This might meet your need.
Well, it would help me in the short run and I certainly don't, you know, I don't need a piece of this revenue. So if the agreement is it goes back to the city, I'm okay, but I don't wanna get in trouble if, if, you know, we then have a barbecue, you know, I mean, if they need to each pull out. I mean, I could buy the ten dollar permits or I can, anybody barbecue cook that would come, I guess I would just suggest that maybe this is a conversation for future meeting. We think about, is there something you wanna do, 'cause in the short run, probably the best way for us to feed, you know, people that come to see the artists or come to see the trains is a food truck. You know, and if, you know, until we can get funding to open a restaurant, that's probably a good short-term solution. And if they each need a ten dollar permit, that's not a problem, I mean, we could come down and.
They gotta, they gotta bring their information in.
Okay.
Yeah, they're not using generic permit.
No, I'm sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, but they, they could have them, they can tell them that's what they need to do, but. That's something we think about, you know, I don't wanna get in trouble with a food truck out here. Or his trailer.
This is actually the first time we've ever dealt with anything.
Yes, Doc's.
Other than our New Earth Festival.
Yeah, right.
We have hundreds of vendors in, but as far as having an individual vendor come in.
Well, we could, you know, I mean, you know, we could have a lot of people eat pizza at lunch, you know, when.
Yeah.
Sure. We need a portable restaurant for us down, you know, since we can't get one to stay.
So that would be, I mean, we're, Liz and I are coming down, there's a, there's a first Friday Corral thing for food trucks in Indianapolis. And we're going, we've got a flyer we wrote for, talking about Atlanta, so we're gonna go down and start meeting with all these different food trucks. There are several that are tied to Ivy Tech and we've talked to Ivy Tech, a lot of the, a number of the graduates from Ivy Tech, from the culinary school, they start with a food truck. And that's, they get funding, Ivy Tech helps them and they keep going, so, and as we, we've been down and met with the culinary people and. I had a conference call this week with two of them that have a business plan for a food truck, you know, so, you know, we would like to recruit some of those to come up this way. You know, particularly on Saturdays, whether it's one or two, and just for the, you know, lunchtime, you know, that period of time. And see if we can generate enough traffic, you know, let everybody know that they're gonna be here, how will we do that? So, you know, we, those of us that live here can eat as well, but I'd like to have something to feed, you know, people that come. That they can mention to you, today I sent them to all the restaurants around us in Carmel, you know.
Any other questions or comments? Yeah, Matt, thanks for coming, look forward to.
Thank you, sir.
Any other new business this evening? Do you hear a motion? Make a motion, we adjourn, sign the claims and adjourn the meeting.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting adjourned.